Testing, one, two, three. Testing, one, two, three. That's not bad. Okay. Thank you. You make it. Oh, you can. Well, we may have to try that. How do you do it? Oh, you just do it from there. All right, board members ready? Mr. Forehand, Black, Seeley. Thumbs up.
All right, ladies and gentlemen. We will call the March twenty eighth meeting in the Caroline County Board of Supervisors to order. Let the record show that all board members are here. Mr. Forehand from the Madison District, Mr. Black from Western Caroline, Mr. Seeley from Bowling Green, Mrs. Long from Port Royal, Mr. Underwood from Reedy Church, and I'm Floyd Thomas from the Mattapanine District. We will begin the board meeting with an invocation from Mr. Black, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Rowan, please rise. Heavenly Father, as we meet here tonight, we ask for your strength, your wisdom, and your guidance, so that we may do the best for here in Caroline County. In your name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Our pledge of allegiance to the black United States of America, to the republic which is one nation under Thank you, Mr. Black. Opening board comments. Mr. Underwood.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Thomas. My first comment is certainly we offer our prayers to the folks in Nashville, Tennessee, who are going through this very tragic time with the shooting at the private school there, asking all of us to be considerate and give them our prayers and our thoughts. Second, Mr. Chairman, I have been talking to some folks from the Frog Level Fire Department. You know, we have career people there. We really need some upgrades to the building. I think Chief and Mr. Whitman are looking at upgrades. So I'm hoping that we can authorize some upgrades to that building for our, to get that property up to snuff, since we do have career people there, and there are many issues there that need to be upgraded. My final comment is I met with the Don Progressive Association on yesterday, and they have agreed in principle, after long discussion and some drop discussion, and I think we've miscommunicated, but they're willing to convey the property over to Little Massey Park back to the county, so we can begin to work on revitalizing that park and removing that building for future building use. So two good pieces of news, and I'm just looking forward for the board's support as we move forward to make that a very nice facility for the county. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Underwood and Mrs. Long.
Good evening, everyone. I just wanted to make a couple of announcements because I know a lot of people leave before we get to the calendar at the end of the night. But I will just share that I was at a meeting, not associated with the county, this weekend, and I was sitting next to someone from Kentucky who started talking about, you know, the horses. And I said, yeah, Kentucky's got some good horses, but we've got Secretariat in Caroline. And there will be a celebration of Secretariat's fifty-third birthday, his fiftieth anniversary for the pre- this triple crown win on the thirtieth at two o'clock at the visitor's center. They're going to have some refreshments and unveil a new sign, certainly open to the public, and Meadows Park, I think, is planning some things. So you all just know that we have a birthday to celebrate this month. It's a great tourist attraction for the county. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. Mr. Seeley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just really have one, is I have my third and last constituent meeting Thursday at Macedonia Baptist Church at six thirty.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Yeah, I just would like to congratulate Mr. Sheville and the Public Works Department for the job you did. We, I think it was after the day after our last board meeting, we had a ceremony to celebrate the opening of that. And that is a really, really, really nice facility, and the people that have seen it and the people that saw the pictures of it were very, very impressed by that. The second thing is we are gearing up to kind of try to tackle the trash issue in our county. So on Saturday, May sixth, we have a kind of a brochure here, I think, Team Up to Clean Up. And I don't know if there's any action needed from the board. Mr. Sheville put that out. But it would be nice if, you know, all over the county, all districts, we had churches and organizations, civic groups, schools, everyone, citizens, that picked a road, it doesn't matter where, with the trash all over, to help clean up the whole entire county. So and just like we said at the last meeting, it's, you know, the Sparta Ruining Club did one, and they picked up a hundred bags in, you know, eight miles, and Ladies Smith Ruining Club did one, and we picked up thirty-five bags in two miles. So it's, it's pretty bad out there, and we could use all the help we can get. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Black. Board members have the big green flyer that he passed out. Mr. Forehand.
Mr. Chairman, I don't normally say a whole lot from board comments, but today will be the exception to that. This is regarding Nashville that Mr. Underwood commented on, and I'm gonna take it further. I've been in a vehicle a lot the last twenty-four hours and listened to the news and updates and things like that. For those that don't know, three children and three adults were murdered in, in a school in Nashville. I commend the brave police officers, or five of them that made entry very quickly, and, and resolved the threat to any additional human life. It is heartbreaking, and I cannot imagine if one of my children were, were there for that, for one part, or one of the victims for the second part. Moving to the point, in the last twenty-four hours, there have been an enormous number of arguments and talking heads and opinions offered. We, we all have an idea that, you know, gun rights, gun control, anti-Christian, trans bullying, the background checks, school security, NRA, Republicans, Democrats, the list goes on and on and on, we can all imagine. But I will, can throw out a few things that, just for clarity, that sometimes gets lost in the argument. The Ten Commandments were, they think, were written about a thousand years before Christ, so we're talking about over three thousand years ago. And those are thou should not steal, thou should not lie, commit adultery, commit murder, things like that. So obviously, if things were written three thousand years ago, they were happening three thousand years ago. Okay? It is an aspect of human nature to do those things that are addressed, and that's just five of the, of the ten. So we need to understand that is in all of us. Okay? It's in all of us, and it's been in all of us for at least three thousand years since it was written down, that we shouldn't do these things. But my question has been for years now, what is it about our society that has devalued life and fostered so much hate that someone will go out and kill children and others that they don't even know? And if you have a question to ask, that is the question. The tool that is used is simply a tool. And I'll throw out some other things. Yes, the United States has the most mass shootings in the world, at least of the, of the countries that, the industrialized, high-wealth countries, all right? But there are at least twenty countries that have a much, much higher burner rate than the United States, but we don't hear about those. These are places that we vacation to, all right? Haiti, Jamaica, Dominican Republic, Brazil, Mexico, Bahamas, St. Kitts, St. Martin are on that, are on that list of all the countries that have a much higher murder rate than the United States. We don't hear those things. To me, that's a little bit of dishonesty. We hear about gun violence, but they don't define what gun, define what gun violence actually is. That is a term that includes any, any harm that happened with a gun, whether it's by a police officer, whether it's by a homeowner defending their children, whether it's actually an act of murder or domestic violence or suicide. Okay? Suicide is a much higher gun violence percentage than murder. And when you take out domestic violence, gang violence, and, and terrorism, the actual number of homicides is actually fairly low. We're much safer in a county like we are now than if we were in a city of the same population. I look at the city of Hopewell, smaller population, three times, four times the murder rate, maybe ten times. What is it about our society, our culture, that has made it okay to go take the lives of children and people we don't know, even people we do know unprovoked? They aren't doing anything to me, but I'm gonna take them out anyway. I've taken literally hundreds of surveys. I actually enjoy, when I go on MSN to check the news out, there's a survey pops up. I'll fill out five or six questions until I'm bored. You know what I've never been asked? Do you ever feel like hurting someone? What do you feel like in our society is devaluing life? Anything along those lines? Never been asked. I'm almost fifty. I'm not, I'm not afraid to share my opinion, especially on things like that. Never been asked one time by anyone, online, in person, over the phone, by mail, anytime ever. And I suspect that everyone in this room that can hear my voice has never been asked that either. But that is the root of the problem. Again, what is driving these people to commit murder? Another point, the pettiness of our political system right now. If we have a, try to have a legitimate, honest, productive conversation on a topic, any topic, much less gun control, the pettiness, the malfeasance, and the misrepresentations float to the top, and that's all anyone sees. And it's absolutely absurd, and it's creating a stalemate in this country, and putting us at odds with each other when we really shouldn't be. Nuance gets lost, facts gets buried, context is a, is a foreign subject to so many people now. Presentism, whereas you, you try to judge the present or the past on what the standards are now, has become the, the norm, not the exception. And that's silly, because we can look back at things we all did in our own lives that we wish we hadn't done, that if we judged ourselves by that same, by the exact same methodology, we would be constantly depressed, and maybe that's what's happening with some of our people. They're trying to look back, oh, wow, I've done some terrible things. I've done some dumb things. I've hurt some people. And they can't get past that, and they continue to do it because they can't get past it in the first place. I don't know. But I know that what we have is broken. One other point that I'll, I'll finish up with. We all know that a lot of the drive has been assault rifles. Okay? I own an assault rifle. But what went into that school was an assault rifle, or two. But what was done with an assault rifle could have been done with a single-shot shotgun or revolver. It could have been much worse. Doesn't take that long. The gun made no bearing in this. But what gun is responsible, what type of gun is responsible for the vast majority of murders in the United States? If you ask the average person, you will say, oh, it must be assault rifles. No. Far and away, like a, a ten-to-one measure, it's handguns. I don't see any legislation, I don't see any pontification on the House floor about banning handguns. But yet, that is what's, that is what is the focus, for some reason, to address our, our violence issue, our gun violence issue. Again, I, I think that's a silly term, because it conflates suicides and murders together, which I think is not something that should be joined together. They're two separate issues entirely. Anyway, I'll close with, when you look at these things, when you hear them on the news, just from now until, till whenever you're asked this question, that question for the very first time, what in our society is devaluing life to the extent that it would make someone go out and do something like that? And when we can answer that question, or start to answer the question, or even ask that question publicly without, without being ostracized and being, you know, hurting someone's feelings, once we can start to ask that question and process those results, then maybe we will have an impact. But until then, it's gonna be more of the same, because of all the other reasons we just talked about. And I, I am critical, and I use the term journalist very loosely. But there is so much manipulation, so much malfeasance, so much lack of context, that you or I, we have to hear it from the horse's mouth in order to get an honest interpretation of what's being said. Because it really, I, I have distrust, and that's, that shouldn't be that way. So, well, thank you for enduring with my diatribe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. I, I thought a pregnant pause was appropriate at that moment. I understand my comments are a few, and then I'll end up with what you said. But I've asked Mr. Seeley to work with the town of Bowling Green to help formalize getting a D cell lane at the landfill for safety of those people returning in on three oh one. I've also asked Mr. Cully to give us a little more budget information this week at our board meeting, and also ask him to restart our quarterly budget reports that we used to get starting next month, and Mr. Cully will report on, on all departments. My last comment was just to say a prayer for the Nashville families and what had been entirely a too often occurrence. But I think based on what Mr. Forehand said, it, it needs a little more comment and maybe a little more discussion. I don't think there's anyone in this room, listening, watching, who wouldn't say what happened yesterday was terrible. I think we would all agree on that. I think the reality of the situation is we lose track of the fact that we all agree on something. How do we stop it is another story, and let's all start agreeing on ways to stop it, whether it's mental health issues, whether it's the wrong people have access, whether young people have access that shouldn't, or a various amount of reasons. But I think we need to start, all of us, not just in this room, but outside and without a doubt with inside the Beltway, start with how do we stop it? And it does go to devaluing life. And I think that's part of where we need to start, is to give folks the understanding that there's always hope. And a lot of times, the hopeless are the ones who are doing this. I'm not gonna say what the reporters slash journalists said, but they thought this was basically just a suicide mission. And if that was the case, that should have been what happened first. But the reality is, we all want to stop it. We all want to make sure our kids can go to school safely. They can come home from school safely. I personally lost a friend in college over his watch. He was being robbed and wouldn't give up his watch, and the robber shot and killed him right there. It's just senseless violence. We need to stop it however we can. And I think that's the theme we need to work on there. So thank you for that statement, Mr. Forehand, and I'm sure the rest of the board will agree that we need to move forward and, and agree on ways we can stop it from happening. Having said that, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is amendments to the agenda. Does any board members or Mr. Cully have any amendments? Mr. Cully has none. Appears to be no, no comments. We will move. You have something else? Okay. We will move forward with the agenda as presented. So we will get to presentations, and we have, at Mr. Underwood's request, Healthy Generations, which used to be the Rappahannock Area on Aging. And Mrs. Holland, if you will come forward, good to see you.
Thank you. Nice to see you all, too. Thank you for the invite again. I certainly appreciate it. I am Pat Holland. I'm the Executive Director of Healthy Generations Area Agency on Aging. As you said, we used to have a really long name, Rappahannock Area Agency on Aging. And again, thank you for the opportunity to talk a little bit about what we do. The agency will start celebrating its fiftieth year in 2025. We've continued to evolve from an agency that began with only a noontime meal to one that truly believes in its mission to enhance the quality of life for all older citizens. Many people have the incorrect belief that as we age, we lose our value. I'm sure each one of you believes differently, and I know that my turning sixty next month will not stop me from continuing to be a productive citizen or having many more lively experiences. Within our region, the total economic contribution of older citizens in 2022 equaled over, all older citizens, older adults sixty and over, contributed over one billion, two hundred fourteen million dollars to the economy, to this area, the Planning District. Of this, over six hundred million dollars was earned income, and close to six hundred million dollars were unpaid. And the unpaid contributions to the region include family, friends, caregivers, as well as volunteer opportunities. We do not lose our value just because we are older and have gray hair. I've given you an impact report. We like our gray hair. We like our gray hair, white hair. I've given you an impact report which looks at some of the services programs that we've provided to both the entire Planning District and also specific to Caroline County residents. COVID impacted everyone and our older residents in particular. The Agency on Aging was there to help people that were meant to stay in their homes. We had an increase of over 17 times the number of home delivered meals that we had previously delivered. We are now trying to get people back to only if you are homebound that you will get meals. That helps our budget. It helps everybody's budget. It also provides for those who are the most in need, homebound, frail, for home delivered meals. As you can see, in the Planning District, we delivered almost 300,000 home delivered meals through COVID. That was March of 2020 through March 1st of this year. We had 527,000 phone calls that we took in and made, which is a huge difference, an increase in what we had. And there's one little number on your sheet that says six iPads. One of the things that we were able to do during COVID is to provide some of the assisted livings and nursing homes in the area with an iPad. Now, I know that sounds like a little bit, but for family members who were not able to see or speak to their loved ones for over a year, that iPad made all the difference in the world. And I will say that I'm one of those people. My mom is at U's Home in the city of Fredericksburg. And luckily, I had a little bit of clout, and I was able to be the first one to use the iPad at that facility to talk to my mom. And we had not seen each other. She has a very hard time communicating, and we had not seen each other in over a year. And it made all the difference in the world. In Caroline County alone, we went from 65 clients receiving calls and services to over 250. And you can see those numbers there that they show the overall number. The 250 clients is not written, and that's the clients that we served. We served over 37,000 home delivered meals in Caroline County. That was up from 3,900 pre-COVID. It's a big, big difference. We had less than 100 wellness calls, which is a call to someone who maybe can't get out or just wants us to talk to them and and see how they're doing, if they need anything. We had less than 100 pre-COVID, and we went to over 4,000 during this time that I'm talking about. We had many, many, many increases in our services. What does the future bring a society that is aging? In 2034, that's only 11 years from now, which goes by very fast, people aged 65 and over are expected to number 77 million, where children under 18, only 76.5 million. So the tables will turn. And for the first time in history, older people will outnumber those kids, the the younger people. We need to be prepared for that. If projections hold true, in 2030, Caroline County will have approximately 33,000 residents. With your percentage of increase, which was about 34% increase in a 10-year period of only those 60 and over, there's a possibility of almost 9,000 residents 60 and over. We need to be here for each and every one of those residents. In a recently completed community assessment survey that was done by the Department for Aging at the state level, specific to our area, the Healthy Generations population, the Planning District 16, about 74% of older residents rated this area and its overall quality of life as good to excellent. But only 44% of those indicated that their community valued older adults. We need to do better at that. According to the community assessment, and evident by wait lists and employee workloads and older services network, while strong, we have a very strong staff at Healthy Generations, it's under-resourced and unable to single-handedly meet the needs of the continuously growing population of older adults. Although community members feel that this area is a good place to live, the ratings given to certain aspects fall below state benchmarks. Housing, employment and finances, information and assistive assistance and productive activities have received lesser scores. One thing that is always evident in surveys completed by older adults is that self-reported needs represent a conservative estimate due to the respondent's strong desire to feel and appear self-reliant. There are many opportunities to make this area a great place to grow. These include better and more senior housing, better long-term care facilities, opportunities for senior social and recreational activities. One thing that I'd like to let you know is that, and I may have said it the last time I was here, but social isolation, long-term social isolation as we get older, is the equivalent of smoking 15 cigarettes a day, which is not a very good health issue. The availability of adequate transportation, as well as many nutritional incentives, from home delivered meals to coming in June, our Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program, which will provide vouchers to local senior farmers markets, $50 each market year for those who are 60 and over and at 185% of poverty level. And as we get our applications out, we'll be getting those to the communities, having open houses or events where we can take applications and make sure that the residents get those vouchers to use for farmers markets. Thank you for the time and energy you give to make Caroline County a wonderful place to live. And thank you once again for the time you've given me to let you know how we're doing and where we need to go with aging population in Caroline. I'd be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for that presentation, Ms. Holland. Questions?
Just a couple of quick ones. This organization, your organization, takes people for rides, van rides to doctor's appointments?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Not only doctor's appointments, but for social activities. They may be to the grocery store. We do a lot of bringing folks closer to the to Fredericksburg, where they can get the Fred Transit. So there's a lot of that intermediary transportation. But if somebody is disabled or 60 and over, we do have our mobility options that can get you where you need to go.
My next answer was what the what's the threshold for it's 60 and over?
60 and over or disabled, a person with a disability.
Every planning district has this type of organization?
I can't. Yes, an Agency on Aging, every an Agency on Aging covers every part of the United States. And we have a Senior Resources Directory. Our website is healthygenerations.org. And on there, on the homepage, you can go to the Senior Resources Directory. And there's an organization, a federal organization, that's called Elder Care Locator. And if you have a loved one in Indianapolis, Indiana, you can give them the address, and they'll plug you right into that Agency on Aging.
Okay.
Most people don't know about us, which is one of the hurdles that we're facing.
I have a friend in a different jurisdiction that I I keep saying there's there's van rides available to your doctor's appointments, because and I keep getting pushback. I'm like, no, it's there. You just got to find it. I said, so I was.
If you point them, you can point them to our direction. We'll be glad to help them find the information for anywhere that they need to get to. My mobility manager, Jennifer Faulkner, has a wonderful relationship with all the other mobility managers in the state, in the area. So we'd be glad to help any way we can.
And one follow-up question regarding COVID. We saw how New York State got so much wrong with as far as sending people back to how did we? How were we different? We as a state or what our policy, how would, how did? Why didn't we have the same carnage that they had in New York State?
I think we have a lesser population. So that's one thing.
Right.
One of the things, you know, I think I can honestly say, I'm not sure I have an answer for that. We we in the agency went slow. We did not rush out to do lots of different things. We helped people in need. We did put out a newspaper article that said, what you need, let us know. We'll see if we can help you. It was it was a kind of take a breath and see what we need to do. I think in our case, in this area, the Health Department was very, very important in in playing those roles and making sure that people were as well as they could be. A lot of testing, the National Guard went out and did lots of testing. So I think that's it. When 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 the the news, when people talk a lot, we learn, and we learned a lot here. I don't think that answers your question. I wish I could give you a better one.
I mean, they they were first, so they were in in some respects a guinea pig or shown everyone else what not to do. And.
They also had Kennedy Airport.
Agreed.
Which is a lot of people from
all over.
Other infected places came through New York and.
But they weren't they weren't coming here. They weren't coming here from wherever to visit our nursing homes.
Right.
They were, and but the nursing homes had that concentration of.
When when people are in close proximity, it it did not give for a good environment. I know that my mom at U's Home, they did have an outbreak. They immediately isolated everyone. So we did learn that from the whole New York and other states. So when you isolated the residents, you had less of a opportunity for other folks to get it. And it was, you know, we, as simple as washing your hands and and having the staff wash their hands, and vaccines played a big part in it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Black? Real quick, how how well do you guys work with GWRC? Is that a big thing that you guys are in tune with as far as working with them?
Yes, very much so. For mainly transportation. And we've gotten a lot of population information from them. That's a relationship that continues to grow. It has not been strong in the past, but is, you know, I think overall, this this area, as far as nonprofit organizations and information and assistance, and it's a it's a very good place to work and work with people. So, yeah, we like them.
So if someone is over 60 and they need a ride to a doctor's appointment, something like that, you guys provide it?
We will try our hardest to provide it.
Okay.
So the mobility manager will take a look at that whole situation. What is what is that client telling us? Do they have other family members that may be able to take them? You know, caregiving is tough.
Sure.
And you don't know what being a caregiver is until you really are there and you feel that pain. But that's one thing that a lot of people can't take time off. So the question, do you have a family member? It's a tough one. We keep asking, we may purchase a global cab fare for that person if our van isn't full. We ask for about two weeks' notice for transportation because we are so busy. But that doesn't mean that if somebody calls two days before and says, I have an appointment, we're going to try our best to find some way to get them, whether it's through with our van or with an outside company. The other thing that we have, which is very neat and and unique to this area, is a travel trainer. And Tamara is our travel trainer. She works with the Fred Bus System. She will hold your hand to teach you how to use the Fred Bus System. A lot of us are afraid to use it, never used it. I don't, I, the only time I've used the Fred Bus is when I was trained. And I do know that I now have the confidence that if I had to use it, I would do that. So we can do that also. We can get people from Caroline and then train them to use the system when they're in the city, in that area. So that's unique to us.
So if I I have a social media page for so if I put this out there and say, if you're over 60, that's fine, and need to write the contact information's right here on the side?
Absolutely. Certainly. Yes, please. Don't ever, don't. That's, you don't even have to ask that question if you call us.
Okay, thank you.
That was kind of my question. The the number on here is your cell phone number?
That is our agency number.
Okay, perfect.
Three, three, five, four, zero, three, seven, one, three, three, seven, five. That's our agency number.
Would you repeat that one more time?
Five, four, zero, three, seven, one, three, three, seven, five. And our website is healthygenerations.org. Lots of information on our website.
Ms. Seeley?
The Farmers Market Program, we as a board support the Farmers Market and actually do it through Social Services and a Food Network as well. So it won't require, it'll just require them to come to a Farmers Market. Can you explain the voucher program a little bit more one more time?
Absolutely. So this is a program that the state has had for many years. We in this area, in the Planning District, have not had it. It has not been open to additional agencies being involved. This is the first year. One of the good things that came out of COVID is some extra money here and there. And this is the one of the very good things that came from that. So the Farmers Market, Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program, now is throughout 99% of the state of Virginia. So what will happen is, in the middle of May, we'll have an application. It's a very short application. The person self-attests their income, so we don't need backup, paper backup. They come to either our office. We're we're there Monday through Friday, eight to 4:30. Or we are going to be at local Farmers Markets or Social Services. Other agencies are going to be able to help us fill out these applications. And that brief application, if you're over 60, if you have an income at 185% of poverty level, which for one person is around $26,000. And one little thing is that you cannot live in the same household as the farmer that's participating in the program. So we will be there. We'll take the applications that either the person fills out. We help them fill it out, or other agencies fill out. We'll be working with the Food Bank, Social Services, a lot of different places. And we give them, it's like a checkbook. It is 10 $5 check to be used at the Farmers Market. Now, Farmers Market, I do want to dance everyone some.
I'm in the meeting.
The Farmers Markets, certain farmers have to be a part of this. So they have to go through their system with the Department for the Aging in Richmond and be approved as a vendor. So to be specific vendors at the Farmers Markets.
Okay, so we can, we can actually let our Farmers Markets know because we have the token program now.
Yes, yeah.
So it it'll be very similar. So I would imagine that if they're qualified for tokens, they'll be qualified or could qualify.
We hope it'll be that many vendors. The vendor then, they take the check and they take it to a bank and cash it. And it's it's just like a regular check.
Oh, okay.
So there, it should be a very easy process for the individual farmers. But the individual farmers at the markets have to be a part of that specific program. It's similar to tokens, just a little bit different.
Okay.
We have talked to the Farmers Market Managers. I've had a meeting with them, and they're they're all excited. I don't know that you could be more excited than we are. But it's, we're looking forward to it. It's a great, great program.
Thank you.
As well.
Do you all work with local park and recs for social things? What type of social things are you looking at? I know at one time, we had a seniors exercise class, but that went away during COVID. So do you work with park and recs in different areas?
Typically, the park and rec has their own program. And although we do at times combine, we're separate and apart from the park and rec. I will, you know, the park and rec, mainly at this point, they're going on trips out of the area, and that's one thing that we don't do. We do have our senior centers in each of the five counties. Now, right now, and everybody knows it's hard to get employees, we have a fill-in manager at our Caroline Cafe. And Caroline and King George are actually meeting together here in this building, in the senior center. And it's been a tremendous success. So they do programs such as, we have a fall prevention program, a Matter of Balance. They do arts and crafts. They've become very, very active in the activities that they're doing now. So that's where, each of them is three days a week. So each is open three days a week.
Mr. Underwood? Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Just have a statement to Pat. Just want to say thank you for the great job you're doing.
Thank you.
I've served on Healthy Generations now for 12 years. And this organization has grown tremendously in terms of service to the county and to our Region 16. There there's always a funding need. We have not increased funding for this organization probably in seven years, maybe, seven, eight years. And and they continue to stretch and do more. So as we're in the budget session, I would ask that we would at least take a look at. look at trying to increase our funding to Healthy Generations. Um, because of the work that they do, I really enjoy the meetings. I think we're, we're an excellent organization. I serve as the vice chair and I just think we're just doing wonderful work in our communities that you very seldomly hear. That's why I wanted Pat to come to let you know what we are actually doing in the community. And there's a lot of work that's behind the scene that no one ever knows that you're doing. So I wanted you to be here for that. So Pat, I certainly thank you. And again, I commend you for excellent job and look forward to continue working with you. That's all, Ms. Chairman.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Underwood. Um, Ms. Holland, I, I really appreciate you being here. Thank you for your time and uh I'm sure we'll all be posting your flyer on our websites and social media things to make sure we get in touch.
I can send that out electronically and you can have it and then you can post it just like that, if you'd like me to.
If you could send it electronically, I'll, I like that.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I appreciate your time.
You have a great day.
Take care. Thank you.
All right, next, as the board is aware, Mr. Cully made his initial budget presentation at our last meeting. And unfortunately, there was some technical difficulties with his file. So one of the things we wanted to make sure we saw again was the revenue picture as it comes in terms of a dollar bill, where each dollar comes from, and with the expenditures in terms of where each dollar goes. So I believe Mr. Cully has delegated that to the finance director. So we're going to ask Ms. Smith if she would come in. Do we have this in the picture? Okay.
While Mr. Sadler's getting that um up for us.
Do I need a drum roll?
Top secret. Okay. Take your time. Mr. Chairman, I believe you all have a copy of the document at your desk. Just let me know if you'd like to wait or if you want me to.
We do. The, the real purpose of this was to share it with the audience and, and those watching on YouTube.
Absolutely.
So we'll wait for Mr. Sadler. For those that know me, I'll, I'd be happy to sing. Oh, see?
Well, you can still sing.
I knew once I threatened you with singing. They won't even let me sing in church. That's how bad it is. Okay.
All right. Um.
It's true.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Tonight, um, we have before you three dollar bills. Um, and I will explain all three as we reach them. The first one that you have here is um a dollar bill that represents what the general fund and what our debt expenditures are for the county administrators' proposed fiscal year twenty-four budget. That number at the bottom, sixty-seven million, sixty-seven point nine million, you will not see anywhere on his document. So I thought that it would be much appreciated if we explain this one in much depth. Now, this dollar bill represents the total cost of general government and school debt that has to be paid for fiscal year twenty-four. Um, so what I did was I took what the general fund uh expenditures total was, I took out the transfers to debt, a retirement fund for the debt, and then I added what the total debt payments were. So essentially, this is all general fund expenditures and all debt expenditures, but it will not be reflective within the proposed budget. Um, so all of the categories have debt included in them. As you can see, public education representing thirty-two cents of a dollar, public safety, thirty-one cent, public works, nine cent, general administration, eight cents, transfers, this is inclusive of all of the transfers to different funds. So you would have transfers to social services, um, to the co, the CSA, transfers to utility and things of that sort. On the unclassified debt line, this is going to be all of our leases. And by unclassified debt, what it, what it also includes is going to be various leases or various debt that we cannot allocate to a specific location. For instance, a couple of years ago, there was an energy savings project where we borrowed money. It was for some windows and some buildings and things of that sort. So because I could not break out that payment into the categories, it falls under the unclassified debt. Also, there are some refundings of debt that go way, way back, two thousand eleven, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, that I could not segregate those as well. So that unclassified debt has a large number of refundings of debts that are previous and it's just rolling forward. So that unclassified debt is about five cents. Judicial administration is three cents, community development, two cents, parks, recreation and cultural, two cents, health and welfare, one cent, and non-departmental. And under health and welfare, I just wanted to notate that this is not um where social services falls, because social services falls within its own fund. Um, so this is just the um health and welfare within the general fund. So again, this is general fund and debt. And if we could go to the next slide?
Have questions.
Okay. If we can back up, Mr. Sadler?
No, yeah, I don't need to. What, what's encompassed in the general administration line item?
So for general administration, you will have board of supervisors, counter, county administration, um, you will have the commissioner of revenue, treasurer, finance, electoral board, and registrar.
All right, all the constitutional officers, with the exception of the Commonwealth's Attorney.
And the sheriff.
And the sheriff. Okay.
And the, uh, circuit court.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. All right. So the next two dollars. Oh, yes, legal services, so our attorney.
The county attorney is under general government.
General government. Yes. Um, the next two dollars represent the expenditures and revenue funds. So these will be the total amount that you will see when we, when we um roll forward on August the eleventh to discuss what our actual general fund dollars will be. And that's the proposed general fund total of sixty-four million, five hundred, twenty-five thousand, five ninety-three. So this first dollar represents the expenditures. Um, and so this is just general operations. Um, you will see the debt piece um at eight cents, and that debt is solely what we transfer into the debt retirement fund. So not inclusive of all the debt, because debt is paid for by transfers from general. It's also paid from consumer utility taxes, um, communication taxes and meal taxes as well. You'll see that again on the revenue side. So this is just what our transfer piece is from the general fund to the debt retirement piece. Um, the transfers number again is inclusive of all the transfers that we transfer to the other funds as mentioned in the first dollar. So you will have public safety and public education, basically switching spaces there, with public safety being thirty-two cents on the dollar, public education, twenty-seven cents, public works, nine cents, general administration, nine cents, debt at eight cents, transfers, six cents, judicial administration, three cents, community development, three cents, parks, recreation and cultural, two cents, health and welfare, one cent, and then um the non-departmental is just way too small.
Ms. Smith?
Yes, sir.
So with public safety moving up, is that due to the increased um firefighters that are in the twenty-four budget? Is that what has reversed all this?
Um, so the previous one, it was, it was due, the public education exceeded public safety because we have about four point four million dollars. That's strictly what we pay for, for the debt service for the school system. So you don't have that when you look at this. You just have the, the transfers that we transfer over to the schools. So their transfer number for their school operations, their textbook, and the school bus, school buses and the school leases that we pay for is only going to be the seventeen million. So it really didn't change much in, in aspect of the public. You're, you're looking at apples to apples when we look at the last two dollars, because the other dollar actually had those nineteen new firefighters in there.
Okay.
But what it also had in there for public safety was the debt service for debt, for public safety. However, this one is just the debt is not in there for public education. So that number is just so huge that it's just changed spaces. Right, this is
Right, right. This, this one is, this one is without debt.
That's correct. Just general fund.
Just general, just, okay.
Just the counties contributing to each department.
Yes.
Do you know, and I know you know offhand, but the seven, this is what's proposed
Yes, sir.
in the new budget. And, and that's why I wanted folks to see this now, and then we'll probably see it again when, when we make the budget presentation. But the seventeen point, seventeen point one, seven, seven for schools?
Yes.
Wasn't that number last year, sixteen point one?
Yes, sir.
So this budget is saying there's a million dollars more for schools?
I believe it's eight hundred twenty-four thousand, eight hundred twenty-four thousand more than last year. Uh, and, and that's just for operations, um, not inclusive of the change in price for buses. So that number is a little bit more than eight hundred twenty-four thousand. So I'll say correct, around a million.
Okay.
Now, oh, does it? Okay. Okay. So I stand corrected. Yeah. So eight twenty-four is the number. Eight hundred twenty-four thousand dollars is the increase to public education this year, proposed.
Proposed.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Where were you judicial off?
All right. And the last dollar is going to be the general fund revenues um for fiscal year twenty-four um as proposed. As you can see, uh, property taxes um contrib, contribute sixty-nine cent of the dollar for all of our revenues for the general fund. Um, and state revenue is about ten cent, other local taxes, ten cent, the total transfers, meaning we do have a two point five million dollar transfer from reserves um in this proposed budget. Um, and that is included within the three point four million, but that equals five cents of the dollar, charges for services, two cents, and then use of money, federal revenue, permits and fees, fines and forfeitures, and all the miscellaneous are all one cent each totaling a, totaling four cents of the dollar. So this is what provides the revenue for the county, for the general fund.
Okay. Is it possible to break out personal property from real estate taxes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Did you have a guess? Oh, please, not red light.
I do not have that with me right now.
I'm totally blind now. Are you, do you bring that up next week? Okay.
So you'd like to see property taxes broken out for personal and
Personal versus, personal and, and real estate if we can?
Yes, sir.
Because it's, it's obvious seventy percent or sixty-nine percent of all our revenue comes from real estate and personal property taxes, which is, you know, why I'd like to hold the tax rate as it is now.
Okay.
Okay. Questions for uh Ms. Smith or Mr. Cully?
Yeah.
Did, well, you raise your hand first. Go ahead.
Uh, I just, so on the, uh, we also got, because I had asked for, um, and I know we're waiting on King George. I like to do surrounding counties. But we also got the dollar bill from Stafford and Spotsylvania, correct, that you gave us?
Yes, sir.
So is that, so if I was to compare their dollar bill to the dollar bills that you gave us, which one would be more comparable? Would it be, would it be the first one or the second one?
Um, what I will say is that um from the proposed budgets online, um, I believe they have their debt service numbers um included within.
So that would be the first one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, all right. Okay, so these are basically pers, uh, pretty much percentages, correct? Like, so in other words, you could say it's thirty-nine percent or whatever.
Yes, sir.
So at minimum, Spotsylvania is at thirty-nine percent. So what you're saying here, if you look, I don't know if you have Spotsylvania's, but Spotsylvania's percent of their budget is thirty-nine percent for publication, uh, education, twenty-five percent for public safety?
Yes, sir.
And Stafford's is forty-seven point, now this is just local revenue, right? So Stafford's, I'm seeing as forty-seven point five percent of their budget goes to public education, just local revenue, where, where, where we're at thirty-two?
Yes, sir.
Okay. That's, I just wanted to make sure I had that information correct. Thank you.
Ms. Smith, the, these numbers are basically, you pulled it from their website and their proposed budget, so you didn't actually get a chance to make sure that debt service was in these numbers or anything like that?
That is correct.
Okay. So we just need to make sure we're comparing, you know, real comparisons. Um, but I understand what you're saying. Mr. Forehand, do you have any questions or comments you'd like to add?
Just, just so I'm clear, the, the, uh, Stafford and Spotsylvania and Irish, is that a percentage or is that a cents per dollar of budget?
So for Stafford, I actually included the slide on the bottom, what they had, and it said general fund expenditures, and it, it actually had percentage on their patch art. So that is percentage um that they have actually created. For Spotsylvania, they actually had the line items for their recommended budget, and I to, I put in their, their totals and came up with their proposed total as I did for us.
Okay.
And came up with what the percentages were.
All right. The, um, the patch chart, I didn't have my magnifying glass to
I'm sorry.
That's, that's all right. I got glasses, but they're not nearly strong enough.
I can email those to you guys.
No, that's, that's okay. I can always go look on their website if, that's where you got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Questions?
That's funny. I used to be the one with the red needles and I can't see a thing.
I have a question. Uh, Ms. Underwood?
Yeah, Ms. Smith, um, one cent tax increase in the county is?
Three cents.
Three thirteen?
Yes, sir.
How much is a one cent tax increase in Spotsylvania?
I do not know. I'm sorry.
Did you say something, Mr. Cully?
My research says it's one point six million for one cent.
Mr. Cully said one way over a million and Mr. Sealy just said one point six million for one cent in Spotsylvania?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that him, Ms. Underwood?
Ms. Long?
I just wanted to point out also on this is, oh, the public safety amount uh is point two five and point two, three, nine, so say point two four. Um, so, uh, just so the public knows, whereas right now we are considering thirty-two percent. Uh, so we're gonna Yeah, because we have increased our, our safety and security and fire and rescue, uh, which serves everyone in the county. Uh, yeah, it's additional nineteen people coming on.
Is that it, Ms. Long?
Okay. Ms. Smith, thank you very much for your hard work, you and Mr. Cully. I, I think this is, is really enlightening and, and people need to see this, because it's where does your money go and how do we get the money that we operate the county from? So in this graphic one dollar sense, I think it makes a lot of sense to people. So we appreciate that. And, and when you come back or when Mr. Cully comes back at our next meeting, we'll, we'll separate personal property tax and real estate tax so we can actually see how it impacts folks more. All right, thank you. If there's no other questions?
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, again, thank you for, for your excellent work. We've got consent agenda. Actually, I think we could probably just keep going. Uh, board members have any items on the consent agenda that they wish to pull or have further discussion? Uh, board members have any items on the consent agenda that they wish to pull or have further discussion for? If there are none, Mr. Chairman, motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion's made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mr. Sealy to approve the consent agenda as presented. Discussion, always in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We do have a closed session scheduled, but we can probably do these. We can do four and five and then do public comment and be a coast to down. Okay, we'll move to agenda item. We can't do public comments because that's scheduled for seven thirty. And the one public hearing we had also scheduled for seven thirty is canceled. So we will take up agenda item number four, which is a continued discussion on request from these Caroline County Public Schools for categorical transfer for fuel expenses. Was Mr. Colley going to do that or Dr. Calvert, did you want to do anything? I think you said what you wanted to say before. You're good? Okay. All right. Mr. Colley, you're going to take care of this while you get ready. I think it's important that we make sure everybody understands and knows that under no circumstances is the board of supervisors going to let the schools run out of gas money and stop the school buses from running. We'll do whatever we have to do to make sure it continues. We do, uh, in my discussions with the board, we do have a few questions. So Mr. Colley, if you would like to start?
Wow, I can't read that. You think you can't read. But anyway, we provide it and they may show on your monitors better. I need one down here. This information from the schools on their FY twenty-two and FY twenty-three, um, expenditures by month in, in transportation. Um, and so you can see that, um, they're pretty much out, they're down to, they spent eighty-four percent of their twenty-three transportation category, in early, you know, till late March, and they've got a little bit more in March that they've got to put in. So it, maybe mid-March would be a good timeframe. Um, and then they are not going to be able to, uh, make it. They think they predicted maybe what, three, twelve, they'll be short. So they've asked that you, um, transfer from instruction, which is their largest category, where they explained last time we were here that they have savings in both health insurance and, um, not being able to fill long-term. They got long-term part-time sub. So they couldn't fill some teacher spots that they have that. And they've historically had six hundred to a, uh, over a million dollars remaining at the end of the year in instruction because of those same type of things during other years. And, um, so they feel that they'll have that three hundred and, and twenty-five thousand dollars they're asking for remaining in instruction, but they do need that move. So they'll have the legal authority to continue to expend, um, as the year runs through. And some of these people are paid out of transportation, uh, for the whole twelve-month cycle. So even though school may end in uh, early to second week of May, they'll have expenditures in transportation throughout. So it's their, excuse me, their request that you transfer, so kind of budget transfer from, uh, the category instruction to the category transportation and three hundred and twenty-five thousand. They do have another chart that, uh, I think shows. So with that, oh, there you are. My knowledge on that subject is, uh, limited. I think they're monitored, uh.
I mean, that's fine. We can, we can work on it. We have two out of three monitors.
All right. We'll work on that in the break, but.
Yeah.
Just power.
Uh.
So. Okay. This is what we had.
This is what, what we had last go around. Um. Okay. Mr. Underwood, you just said you had a question.
I just, if I could just ask Dr. Calverick about, you know, how those, you, you're, a couple of your months, um, had doubled from the previous year. Was there additional services needed for that month? Particularly?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Underwood. We do have a more comprehensive presentation, which we obviously will not share with you tonight, but we're providing you the slides that we put together in preparation for this evening that have a wealth of information, um, associated with the gallons used of diesel as well as gas. Um, we also outlined some of the items that contributed to these increases. We have additional routes. We have a hundred and fifty new students. So that is increasing our stops and the length of our rides because we have a shortage of drivers. So the routes are becoming, um, longer. We also have two new special education routes. We have over a hundred new special education students and approximately forty-nine of them require special transportation. And we have exceeded our athletics and our field trips from last year by over a hundred and fifty additional trips at this point in the year from the end of last school year because of course we are well beyond the, the post-COVID scenario and are fully operational in those arenas, which is exciting, but also costly when you're experiencing the increased gas costs that have continued to maintain a higher level rather than decrease, especially associated with diesel, which you'll see, um, our usage in the document you just received.
Mr. Underwood, the, the other, going down the class three from class four also made a lot of our trips longer.
Yes, sir. You are absolutely correct.
Thirty minutes one way longer. So.
You mean the the class we compete in, in terms of, of scholastics?
Correct. If we wanna, if we wanna compete against a like-sized school, we sometimes have to travel further.
Right.
Than what we did prior.
And that was, that was one of the questions that, that board members had asked before is the mileage different? I had another one that a board member asked me, when we're doing the budget or when we did last year's budget, what fuel cost did we use? Did we use the June fuel cost or the May fuel cost or?
We increased the budget by a hundred thousand dollars and hoped that the prices would steady out and go back down. And as we see.
What fuel cost did we use? Did we use May or June? When you're calculating the budget, like right now, are you using the price of fuel today? Or are you going to wait till June and say that we'll use the price of fuel in June when you calculate the budget?
Correct. We increased our budget last year by a hundred thousand dollars into this year.
One more time.
They give me their budget in February. They're not calculating fuel prices in May and June.
But then.
It's done.
But then we, we give them the budget back in June and they, they make categories.
Yeah, with a set amount, but I don't think that the categories change that much. They just have to get, normally they have to get money out of it because we've cut them. So I don't, I, I, I know their initial budget's done in December or January. It goes to their school board in February. So I think they have used what they think fuel will be. I don't, that's up to you, but I don't think they'll agree.
That's, see, see, that's what I'm, I'm, I'm asking is if you know today, a gallon of gas is four dollars a gallon, do you put that number into your budget? Or do you have a number you used from, from February?
We're using the number from February at the time. And with level funding last year, we increased it by a hundred thousand dollars because we saw the fuel prices were increased.
That was, that, that was what I really wanted to know is how you determine that number. If you use the number in February, prices went up and they were at their highest in June. And then they, they basically went down, the gas went down for the rest of the year. Okay. Mr. Sealy, you got a question?
When we did a school board budget, we used the price of fuel and we looked at the gallons used for the previous year. So I, I, I guess the heart of the question is, is adding a hundred thousand dollars doesn't really mean a whole lot when you're looking at what the price of fuel is and where, where it was in February. So I guess the question is, is it's, you know, math problem, number of gallons times the price at that point in time, is that what goes into the budget?
Well, if you take a look at some of the documents that are included in the packet that we provided, you will see, um, the chart that's notated differences from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-three. On the far right of that slide, it says diesel price per gallon average per month. And it says in FY twenty-two, it was two dollars, two dollars and thirty cents per month to five dollars and seventeen cents a month. And in FY twenty-three to date, it's from four dollars, eleven cents to five dollars and forty-three cents. So those are the prices that, that we are experiencing. And then if you look further into the packet, you'll see, um, two bar graphs that are extensive in nature. They cover FY twenty-two diesel, FY twenty-three diesel, FY twenty-two gasoline, FY twenty-three gasoline price per gallon. And you can see that we have done a comparison from July to June of both of those years. So we are looking extensively at a month-by-month basis. And we are appropriating funding when we're building our budget based on our best prediction, knowing that we are crafting budgets for presentation in January and early February, but again, not getting that final budget until May. And so, um, that is why we are here with a resolution that requires no new funding, um, that we think is feasible and it has, um, the impact of, of solving the, the issue, but also does not, um, negatively impact any current programs or any current compensation methods.
I mean, you realize we just got this, so there's no way anybody could have looked at this.
Mr. Sealy, I respectfully respond by saying that our school board requested that this was an agenda item on our March fourteenth joint board meeting, and it was removed by a board of supervisor and then brought to the dais for public dialogue, of which the decision was delayed on Mar- on March fourteenth to this evening. So I do ask for you to make an expeditious decision as a board on behalf of students, staff and the community.
No, my only point was is we didn't have this until a few minutes ago. So I'm asking questions because I, I didn't have anything to look at prior to this. So I'm just, I'm asking because I didn't know this was here.
Well, I am happy to answer your questions. Also defer to the county administrator who I met with yesterday and provided this information to, that he shared.
Dr. Calverick, uh, let me say, um, at our last meeting, you explained where the money was, the savings was coming from.
Yes, sir.
Based on your savings. So you're correct. And there's no impact to the budget other than the transfer, which I think, um, really kind of is a no-brainer as we look at it. The, what, what I would say is that I think we need to be prepared for this. Again, because prices are probably going to continue to escalate. So as we look at twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we need to make sure that if we have the additional one hundred and fifty students, if we have the additional route mileage, cause I don't think it makes a difference on how many routes you run. I think it's the mileage that's the issue. You know, one bus can run two routes and take care of the same mileage. I want to make sure that our mileage is increasing. So if we're going to see that increase based on our additional students, then we're definitely going to have to look at this again in twenty-four and twenty-five. And I don't think gas prices are going to go down very much.
I would agree with that. Additionally, I do think it would be important for schools to sit hip-to-hip with the departments that you oversee that have a large vehicle fleet on the road and talk about how we are collectively budgeting for these increases. As I would imagine that Fire EMS and the Sheriff's Department are experiencing some of these rising costs as well. So it'd be great to have discussion about some of those methods for, um, print, you know, planning and preparing. I also want to indicate that when we did our five-year historical overview of funding from the locality, we have not received any funding in five years for utilities or, um, for those types of increases. And we also have been level funded in twenty-one and twenty-three. So we are really working within the confines of the current funds. And that's why we took great pride in resolving our own issue and coming before you and not having to ask for additional funds. We were able to problem solve by doing a thorough analysis of our categories and identifying a solution that does not negatively impact services or current employee base.
Dr. Calverick, we appreciate your hard work in that sense, um, which is why I asked the original question of, do you budget based on this month, last month, whatever? And that kind of helps.
Sure.
So we're trying to prevent the same problem from next year. Do you, um, we don't know, do the schools have a fixed price contract with gas providers? Or fuel providers? Cause I know we used to have a, a price for the sheriff's vehicles and they would just go up and use their card and it was whatever.
Correct. We are under a fleet contract. We are actually looking at some state contracts at this time to try to shift to see if we can get a reduced, a further reduced rate. But currently we are under fleet with Shell as for contract. And we do receive a discounted price.
So you're under a fleet contract with Shell and you get a discount based on what their current pump price is? Can you tell us what that is?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. Do you? You don't know either?
I do not know. No, sir. That is far into the weeds for me in terms of daily knowledge, but we can certainly investigate that number and get it back.
We just want to make sure, I mean,
Sure.
As I said in the beginning, we're not going to let you run on gas. Under no circumstances is that going to happen. So we just had some questions to make sure we don't, it doesn't happen again.
So along that vein, I'll make a motion that we, can I just, I just have one more?
We're going to do that. We, we just had a couple more and then we're.
Mr. Colley? I got a question. Cause the sheet of, uh, Dr. Calverick, you have a good point. When you do your budgeting for the sheriff's office or Fire EMS for amount of gas used, do you go by price per gallon or do you increase? Like, how do you figure that out for them?
Departments, departments submit their requests to me.
Okay. So, uh, I mean, you must know.
Department directors or the sheriff, how they, you know, we, we historically look at what they're spending. And I make sure that I have raised them in the past sometimes when I didn't think they were high enough, but.
Chief, uh, Major Mo, you guys are here. I'm just curious as to how you, like, as far as fuel costs.
Major Mo's here. He's just got a white shirt.
Right, right. I mean, Sheriff Mo, I'm sorry. Sheriff Mo, it's such habit.
We should give him a dollar for each time.
We submit.
Right. It's one of like the jars.
In our budget, we submit price per gallon.
You submit price per gallon, chief?
Yeah, what we believe it's going to be. And that way, Mr. Colley, if he doesn't like our price per gallon, he can change it.
Okay.
So we burn about thirty-eight thousand gallons of diesel fuel and about ninety-five hundred, uh, gallons of gas.
Okay.
We use price per gallon as well.
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to know. Thank you.
So that, so it is important when we approve the final budget for twenty-four, is it possible we could have an estimate of what you think price per gallon is?
Certainly. We can provide one at the time. We'll have a significant increase in our fuel based on the prices that we're seeing this year.
And those are things we just need to know.
We'll be supported with that.
Yeah. And again, we're not going to let you run on the gas next year either. So I think that's it. Uh, one other thing, just to make sure you're pulling this from the instruction category.
Yes, sir.
And we're sure there's plenty of money in instruction because of what you said last time. There were teachers that weren't hired or less experienced teachers at a lower salary. So your instruction budget is not what it is presented or will not be spent as much as what was presented.
Outside of the pandemic years, we are typically running with approximately two percent of our overall budget remaining. And that tends to be, um, approximately four to six hundred thousand dollars left in the instructional budget. Now, obviously through the pandemic with grant funding, we've had a higher amount that has been returned at the end of the year to the locality. Um, but the instructional budget, just to give you perspective, when you think about the enormity of our, our funding in terms of our total pot is seventy-two point seven percent off the top of my head um, of that budget. So it does absolutely represent the, excuse me, seventy-two point seven one percent. So it is by far the largest pie piece of the puzzle.
Yeah. Thirty-six million dollars is what you have in instruction based on the last report you gave us.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Um, who was that? Who was going to make the motion? We're ready for you to, we're ready for your motion now.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we transfer the three twenty-five from instructional category to transportation and for schools.
I'll second.
Motion's made by Mr. Underwood, seconded by Mr. Black that we approve the categorical transfer for transportation from, uh, instruction for the school system. Discussion. Discussion, all in favor, say.
Just, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't transfer some more. They've got summer coming up, and prices could go up before the end of the school year. Do we want to increase it any? Okay. Just a thought. I just don't want them to have to come back to us again.
That is a good discussion point. Dr. Calverick, you can, you can just yell from there if you'd like.
Thank you.
And we have, again, from your rapport, you're spending four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars a month in fuel for, or for transportation, I guess. That includes fuel and salaries. And you had one point three million, so we're close to the three months left. Any other discussion on the motion?
I, I would be okay with increasing it some. Why are we going to, uh, why are we going to increase when that's what they're asking for? When she said that, that was fine. I guess I don't understand why we're trying to increase when the schools tell us they need this. We couldn't even get a second at the last meeting. They asked for the same thing. We couldn't even get a second. And now here we are. We're trying to give them more. I just, I simply don't, I don't understand why we're going to throw more money at them when they don't need it. When she said this is what, what we, we just need.
Yeah, we're just trying to make sure. I think that's what Mrs. Long was trying to do, was make sure.
I just wanted to make sure they had included a buffer in case prices go back up.
She said there was ten thousand.
But short, that's why I wanted to know.
We should, we should really, really ask the government if the war in Ukraine is still driving all the prices up.
Or we should ask if we're going to produce more fuel here. I, I, I think that's all. We will meet again in June. If you're running low in June, we're good. We're gonna, we're gonna move ahead and give you the three twenty-five, what, that you asked for? From instruction? Oh, I think we're going to carry the motion first. No further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carried unanimously, so we will make that transfer. Mr. Cully, you will make that transfer happen, and Ms. Smith will take care of it, I'm sure. We're just going to keep going, if that's okay with the board. Agenda item number five is a proposed early purchase refined rescue brush truck. We're going to come back at seven thirty in there.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, before he denies an unusual request, because the department has had such difficulty in getting one-ton pickup trucks that we use for our replacement brush trucks. Earlier in the consent agenda, the board approved two purchases of those trucks that would have been fiscal year twenty-two with fiscal year twenty-three. Those orders have been canceled and reordered. Mr. Cully, in his, his budget presentation, presented a replacement brush truck for Frog Level in the twenty-four CIP. And what I'm asking the board, if you have a high degree of competence that you think you may be funding that, if we could go ahead and lump that in with the order of the other two brush trucks. Certainly, your discretion. We could wait. My only concern is it's been so many years. We do. Yeah, we found, we're, we're, we're not ordering them ourselves. We're, we're going to ride on a contract with a large employer, private sector that buys tons of Ford trucks. And I'll let you use your imagination.
I believe that was discussed before. Thank you.
Huh?
We discussed that before you're getting trucks or getting on a contract with somebody else.
I think it was on staff meeting.
Yeah, it was staff meeting.
That was staff meeting. I haven't, the whole board hadn't heard this. You've heard it.
Okay.
And so anyway, yeah.
We don't want to tell too much information, right?
Right, right. Yeah. So anyway, that's, that's the importance of this because that order is getting ready to be, to be released tomorrow or the next. That, there were, we don't have time for another meeting if we miss that contract.
Actually, the writers in the, in the, the notes we have, so we all know who it is.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Sealy had a question.
In, in, in all the fire apparatuses that we've ordered, I mean, we're waiting, chief, I guess, currently for one that we ordered two years ago that we're still.
It's, it's been canceled. I mean, all the apparatus. Absolutely. Yes, sir.
I mean, all the, I don't mean the, the brush trucks, but I mean, all the apparatuses. I mean, we ordered a, a ladder truck that we're looking at at least two and a half years on. So this can't be a surprise. And if we're, I mean, it's a brush truck. We just need to move forward. I'm going to make a motion that we go ahead and, and with a high degree of confidence, go ahead and make the early purchase through that contract so that we can at least ensure we have that vehicle.
I'll second. Okay, the motion was made by Mr. Sealy because, of course, you know, this means we have to approve this in the budget coming.
Correct.
Okay. The motion's made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Underwood and Mr. Black simultaneously. Discussion on the motion?
Just a quick question. Um, how long, what's delivery on something like that?
They're estimating between four and six months.
Okay. And then month, six weeks, eight weeks, turnaround, slide-in unit?
The slide-in, correct. So we'll, we'll wait on the slide-in unit until you approve the budget.
Sure.
But the slide-in units, I haven't had a problem getting. I've got two sitting on the floor right now.
Okay. I was just thinking we slide, it's not one we slide out of the old one and put into the new one.
No, new slides.
All right.
We did carry the motion, right?
We haven't voted yet.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay?
Thank you.
Carries unanimously. Thank you, chief. It's seven thirty. We can go back to our public comment portion of the agenda, which is scheduled for seven thirty. The board provides this opportunity to allow any, any citizen to speak regarding any matter that's not a public hearing. So at this point in time, I will open up the public comment section of the agenda. Is there anyone who would like to speak as part of public comments? While this gentleman makes his way down, if there's anyone else who would like to speak, feel free to move closer to the center aisle.
Scott Mojer in Boulder Green District, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight because we've been operating with the food bank out of Fredericksburg, and we've been using a facility here, this driveway through here, several months. And it's been such a success that the food bank wanted to actually make a permanent site here. And they asked me to sign a contract. I said, well, this is not my facility. This belongs to the county. We not, we're not alone in this. We partner with Fire and Rescue, Chief Loftus supplies manpower as well as the sheriff's office. But we'd like to partner with the board of supervisors and make this a permanent site for food distribution center for the actual food bank. So Mr. Cully has the paperwork. He can sign it with your permission, but it's really been a huge success. And we're going to try to develop some type of a strategic plan on how to deliver as well through the sheriff's office and maybe fire and rescue. At least through the sheriff's office.
How, how does that work, sheriff? They, they drive through in the front or the back or?
No, they come out right off the main road. They just come straight down through here, and it's from, uh, it's going to be the third Monday of every month, if y'all approve it, it'd be a permanent site. And the people will come. They'll fill out a little bit of paperwork, and then they'll get their weekly ration or food or whatever they're giving out that day. They have all kinds of stuff.
And then they drive out through the school side?
Then they drive out through that side, and it's just one loop. So it was, it's been very successful. We were close to running out of food one time, and I know the people really appreciate it. And Wendy can speak on how social services, the, the benefits from social services is going to decline if they haven't already. So people are going to be looking for some type of assistance because everybody's been getting their maximum amount of benefits through social services, and that has been cut back.
So that was since the pandemic started.
Yes, sir.
The faucets have been wide open.
Exactly.
Okay.
And they're cutting.
So we're all, yeah, they're, they're actually starting to.
Terminology, yeah.
They're all, they're actually starting to get back to pre-COVID, prior COVID levels of sanity.
Yeah, we've got a great food bank service throughout the community with the churches, and they do a wonderful job. But we want to jump in there and be part of the community and help the community. So Loftus and I discussed it, and Captain Lambert's been spearing forward into this project, and she's really making a difference, and we're really happy about how it's turned out. So.
Okay. Say one more time before you go. When is the food bank? What day? What time?
It's the third Monday of every month, and it will be from, uh, excuse me, ten o'clock, ten o'clock to one o'clock.
And it will be here?
It will be here. You come right in here to the community services building, go right down, right behind this building. The only thing they'll utilize for this building is that they open the door on the side, and they use the restroom for the workers. Everybody else stays in their vehicle and just travels right on through. So, but if it wouldn't have been such a success, they would, they wouldn't have asked for a permanent spot. So I'm real happy that it has been really good.
Thank you, Sheriff Mojer.
You, you have anything, Loftus, that you're, okay, thank you. All right. Thank y'all.
Wow, he said you're doing a fine job. That's great.
Thank you.
Mr. Cully, is that something you would recommend to the board?
I knew they were doing them sort of temporary, and then we hadn't had any issues. I haven't had anything reported to us of being any kind of problem for public works. So I would certainly recommend it's a good service to the community. And they have this little contract that Chris is reviewing right now. But if you want me to sign that, if y'all would authorize me to do that, it'd be fine. Yeah, after public comment.
Yeah, I think we can let Mr. McKenzie review it, and then we'll go from there. Is there anyone else who would like to speak to the board regarding any matter? Anyone else who would like to speak to the board regarding any matter before we close public comment? You sure? Okay, hearing none, we'll declare public comment closed. Our public hearing was canceled. So we've completed everything on the front and everything on the back. Mr. Cully, would you like to give us informational calendar items? And then we'll go out and break for closed meeting and.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Tomorrow night, uh, here in the E O C, we have the fire and rescue award ceremony. We didn't, we didn't have enough responses to do a banquet, but we are having an award ceremony here in the E O C, and that's at six P M. As you heard earlier, on Thursday at two P M, at the visitor's center of the secretary at celebration and Mr. Sealy's constituent meeting at Macedonia. April first, we have the love sign unveiling in the town of Bowling Green at ten A M. Our next meeting is the eleventh at six P M. That'll be budget public hearing night, as well as other probably delayed zoning things that'll move forward. And we've already scheduled a budget work session on Tuesday, the twenty-fifth of April. And I think that's the only things we have on so far.
That sounds right. We don't, we do not have another meeting before Easter.
Correct.
Okay. Any questions, comments for Mr. Cully with the calendar? Hearing none. Thank you, Mr. Cully. Closing board comments? Then we'll go to our closed meeting and come back and adjourn.
Mr. Forehand?
I have none, sir.
Mr. Black?
I have none.
Mr. Sealy?
I have none, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Long?
Let's wish everybody to enjoy this beauty of the spring. And for those of you who celebrate, enjoy your Easter and your family, and be thankful that despite all our differences and all the misunderstandings or the hard-heartedness that we see every day on TV, that, that little bit of softness has to start within each of us. So the old saying goes, be kind to one another and have a great week until we're back here again. Thank you.
Mr. Underwood? All right, thank you, sir. Again, Happy Easter to those that celebrate Easter and hope that peace that comes with Easter is with all of us. Those who celebrate Ramadan, I believe we're in that month now. And those that celebrate Passover, I believe that starts next week. So we have quite a few religious holidays now. Let us try to find a good peace on earth and hopefully some goodwill. I know that's times we use it a different time of year, but that should be every time. That concludes our closing board comments. Mr. Sealy, you have a motion for closed meeting?
Yes, sir. I moved at this board convening closed meeting pursuant to the personnel section, exemption of two point two dash three, seven, one, one, A, one of the Code of Virginia to discuss personnel matters relating to the compensation of employees in the Commonwealth Attorney's Office.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Forehand. Motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Forehand, who entered in closed meeting under the section stipulated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carried unanimously. We will be back after closed meeting. If there's any action to adjourn and to give Mr. Cully authorization
...
Is there a second to Mr. Sealy's motion? Second by Mr. ... Motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mrs. Long. Discussion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Forehand, do you certify that only those things that we went into closed meeting were discussed?
I so certify.
Mr. Black, do you certify?
I so certify.
Mr. Sealy?
Mr. Chairman, I so certify.
Mrs. Long?
I so certify.
Mr. Underwood? And I as well certify. That takes care of our closed meeting certification. We had two action items. One is to authorize Mr. Cully to sign the agreement for the
Mr. Chairman, I make, I make a motion that we allow Mr. Cully to sign the agreement with the regional food bank for distribution at, at the Community Services Building, third Monday of each month.
Second. That was Mr. Black.
Yeah.
Motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mr. Black. Discussion. All those in favor of food bank here, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously. The other action item we have was to accept the recommendation of the interim Commonwealth Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the recommendations for salaries for the Commonwealth Attorney's Office as presented by the county administrator.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Sealy and seconded by Mr. Black. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. That appears to be the end of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
I apologize for having you here such little time. All those, Mr. Sealy's making a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Sealy, seconded by Mrs. Long to adjourn. Discussion.
You just want to sit here.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Have a good night, lady, ladies and gentlemen.